Call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Boss.
Present.
Pippiya.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Throm.
Present.
Barnes.
Here. We have four, eight. All right. In the minutes, I just had some slight changes. On page one of the minutes, I thought it was important to say Mayor Gunn asked the three firemen on the committee that were in attendance to complete that sentence. The other thing, I listened to the meeting and the line right above that, it says, "And a public meeting will be held later." That September 20th day was regarding information needed by Emily Benedict. It was not when the public meeting would be held. And then, at the very last line there, just, "We'll confirm costs in September." And then in number three, I just thought we should reference their, say Officer Joe Mayhew, Officer James Lees, and Officer Tyler Williams. And then on page two, under the sewer assessment, instead of that consensus of counsel was to leave the ordinance as is, I believe, if you listen to the tape, it says, "No action was taken." So those are my changes.
Now, say that again, where was it?
On number five.
Okay, the part that you changed before, now we're changing it to what?
Pull the last sentence and say, "No action was taken." There is no consensus regarding that.
I thought there was.
So, no, if you watch the tape, there was none. So I would-
I missed the whole part about the officers, so I don't know what you said there.
I just wanted to add officer before their names.
Oh, just the word officer?
Yes. Does anybody else have any changes?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I do. On page five, which would be number four applied.
Okay.
At the bottom, under census.
Okay.
Instead of organizer, it should be the league census outreach manager.
Okay. Met with the league. The league?
League census outreach manager, rather than organizer.
Census outreach manager. Okay.
And then I have a question on page four, under number four, water sewer, department firing. I wanted to ask the other two committee members, Todd and Kevin, was there a meeting at which we talked about adding an employee? I don't remember that committee meeting.
I don't remember that occurring either.
I don't either.
Did we, did you-
So I think that should be struck.
It, that came from me.
Did you listen to it on the tape?
I, I, I said that, and it was true.
But we haven't-
Early on this year, we talked about it.
Not, I was not, I guess I was not aware of the meeting.
Who else is on the committee?
Uh, Todd and Kevin.
If it was discussed, it was, I mean, I don't think any decision was made, maybe it was just bantered about, but not enough that we didn't make a decision.
No, not even proposed to council. So I, I really think that should be struck.
Well, it's, it's what I said, though, and that's what needs to go on the minutes.
But, but it's not true. The committee didn't discuss it.
So you, I don't want to argue with this, but you're calling me a liar, and-
Okay, let's-
No, but that's, that's basically, I, I, that's what the words are. And, and I, and I'm not getting upset about this, but it's, that's what I said, and that's what should go in the minutes.
Well-
It's not that it's-
But this is saying of the committee, which is Todd, Kevin, and myself.
Uh huh.
And, and we have no recollection of that.
But it, that's not the point, it's the, it's what was said.
That's what was said, that's what was said at the meeting, but not what the committee decided.
Yeah, that's what- I'm not saying anything-
Did you listen to the tape, Darlene? Did he specifically say that in the tape?
I do not know.
Did anyone else listen to the tape?
Yeah, well, he did say it, but whether it's true or not, I have no idea.
Okay, so I think what, Dave Hammett will retire by the end of December, and then we can say C.A.S.J. John noted, because that's true.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Rather than say that noted that had, okay, well, to say that he said it.
Right, right, that's all, that's what the minutes are for, it's just what, what was said, not what you believe is true or not.
Well, I think we ought to take the committee out of there. You know, couldn't say it was stated.
Well, it is an option, we could pull it out.
Just the whole line out of it.
We could just, well, yeah, just say by retiring by the end of December and leave it out.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary for the, what's-
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, after December, we'll pull it, we'll put the period in after December.
Okay. And just for future reference, it's not, minutes are not what you feel has happened or what you want has happened, it's what actually is said.
Yeah, but we don't do word by word, so if it's not true, and it's not necessary for what's in the minutes, I think we're okay to pull it out.
Cindy, what did they say to you about doing the minutes when we were down at Como?
They told me not to do he said, she said, and to only put in the minutes exactly what would affect the outcome, not any of the discussion, really, and whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just put a period after December.
So we're gonna stop after Dave Hammett will be retiring at the end of December.
Yeah, that'll work.
Are you okay with that, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any amendments? I would entertain a motion to accept as amended.
To approve regular minutes, August 26, 2019, minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, oh, all right. On public comments, if there's anyone in the audience that is not on the agenda and would like to share, you're welcome to come for five minutes, give your name, your address, and your ward.
Good evening. Oh, I just came back for a couple more questions that I guess weren't fully answered two or four weeks ago, I guess, now.
Yeah, will you go ahead and give your name and address?
Dexter Spitsnagle. My address right now is 109 Highway 77, Marysville. So I guess last week, Carla brought up about the fee that we have to pay with the sewer. So I guess, I started looking into, the city ordinance is just out of curiosity, and one ordinance that I guess I came across was 15-216. It talks about property owner being required to connect the city sewer. It says at the very bottom of it, it's provided that the public sewer is within 100 feet of the property line. And I guess I went back and kind of listened to the meeting notes of the meeting that me and my wife came to four weeks ago, and it was mentioned that the property line was 220 feet away. So I just, I just had a question on that, and then the requirement of being able, being happened to install a grinder pump up to that versus being allowed to say that there's not sewer available for that statement, and then maybe being able to put in our own sewer, whether we're annexed or not, I guess.
It is true that the ordinance say within 100 feet, but also, the county goes on a 400 feet requirement, so, and it doesn't, it says within 400 feet, probably, and I'm not, I'm not going to speak for the county sanitarian, but they have, they have that limitation, is for, within 400 feet of a city sewer.
Right, so I talked with Marlene today, actually had her out on the lot, just to take a look at it, make sure that if we were able to put something beyond a grinder pump, that we'd be able to, being that it's five acres, she said that we'd be fully fine with that. She said that it does stay within 400 feet, that it's preferred to go to city sewer, but it's not a requirement. It's, it's, has to be decided by you whether we can access or not, and whether it's technically provided or not.
Mm-hmm.
So she said it's, it's fine either way. It's more dependent on you guys than, than what she said is allowed.
So she's, just to verify, so she's not requiring you to be hooked up to our city sewer?
Correct.
She just, she just said they prefer it, but she would allow it on your property?
Correct. She said that since it's, I think the rule is more than three acres, you can have even a lagoon technically, but we wouldn't really want to put a lagoon up there. Well, I mean, it's just kind of a question of, I know that it stated that you guys want to annex the land, which, which makes sense because it's, it's within the line to make it continuous. But I guess, the thing that I just don't understand is, if we, if we are annexed and we are paying city taxes, what is, I guess, given to us beyond what's already there? So that was, I guess, one thing that I asked a friend of mine that's, that's a lawyer in Nebraska, which doesn't make sense down here, but he said up there, cities are more or less required to bring utilities to the lot if they're requiring them to be hooked up. So that's what kind of got me on this one. And then it also, I guess I kind of looked at the, just the Kansas statute, just in curiosity too, and it talks about, if the city proposing to annex land under their provisions, which allow them to annex, which you guys fully can, it says that they shall make plans for the extension of services to the area proposed to be annexed.
The difference there being that we weren't going to force you to annex, we were going to ask you to ask to annex.
Okay. So if, I guess that's where the confusion is, I mean, are we required to annex, are we not required to annex? What, can we do, I guess, we have the lot purchased now, and we actually have our, the house kind of laid out, so we'd like to start digging this week if possible, so we just want the final question answered.
I would just like to say that if they are adjacent to the property and can hook up, and let's say they build a $300,000 home, their property taxes to the city will be 2,100 a year. We would like them to annex to the city. That's what the city portion of their taxes would be, 2,100 a year, just as an estimate. So we would be foolish not to encourage them to be part of the city. Because we haven't completed the sewer line beyond that manhole, we are forcing them to get a grinder pump, which costs almost $7,000.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Are we, is this like an agenda item, or, I mean, this is supposed to be a five-minute comment period, I don't know, is this a back and forth? Because it's not on our agenda.
Yeah, well, it's been on the agenda, you know, before and-
Before, but not tonight.
Again, again. And there's no disrespect to you, we have to look at the broad picture here. The suggestion is being made to just pass and let you have it, and not have to pay for your service hookup. That kicks the door open to whoever we have charged that money to. Can we afford people coming back and suing us?
Well, they have already agreed to the, be annexed and to pay the sewer assessment fee. They each have signed an agreement for that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
No, it's nothing you've done, it's-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of, Madam, Madam, I mean, my concern would be, so somebody buys a lot and they want to build a $100,000 house that doesn't bring as much taxes, what do we say then?
We would still want them in the city for, for a property value.
I just, I just don't think the possible value of a proposed structure should be the deal break.
Well, I don't either, I was just giving an example for you guys to understand-
I understand what you're saying.
-what, what potential property taxes we would, if we do not annex them, what-
I think we should do, as we did at Hartley Bridge, follow the guidelines we used there.
Well, that was a 10, well, that was a specific 10-year impact fee.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know, Craig, do you want to say anything at all about 15-247?
Eastside Sewer?
Yeah.
I've taken a preliminary look at it, and presently, I, I would like to see some more supporting documentation, if it exists or can be found, and I can, can review it, that, I guess, explains that ordinance, which, as I understand it, applies to this specific piece of property, should it be annexed? Is that, am I stating that correctly? Because there is specific language that is subject to interpretation, and maybe different interpretations even on this council, as I understand it or have been told. So to, I think, gather a better understanding or further analyze what that interpretation should be, the origin of this benefit district, I think, is imperative, and that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. There was a certain total amount of assessments that was, that was created north of $500,000. There was a certain amount of properties assessed at that time or around that time, around 2002, as I understand it. Did it total the, those assessments at that time, that 500,000 or north of 500,000, I don't think it did, I don't think it got even close. What I am concerned about is, what does that even mean? And I don't know what that means. As I understand it, the city financed the remainder of the project cost in addition to that assessment total. And as I understand it, that debt's been paid off, one way or another, as of 2018, I think. These are all things that I've gathered in the last week or so through some, some documentation and just been told. I would prefer to really see all the documents that support all of that, not that I don't trust what I'm being told, it's always just better to have it because we have a clearer picture. And it may instruct how the city, what options it has for this individual property and any future properties that are annexed into city limits, like this one, which I think the city, above all else, should be doing what it is allowed to do, has the legal authority to do, which would be governed by certainly ordinances, state law, but also the origin documents of this particular benefit district, because that's what we're talking about, as I understand this assessment. But that's just one issue we're talking about, we're also talking about whether or not it gets connected at all, whether it, it gets annexed by consent or unilaterally. I mean, there are a lot of issues I'm hearing right now, just in these five, 10 minutes tonight, and I know that this has been a conversation multiple times. This isn't a long-winded way of me saying I'm not, you know, I, there's no answer for you. It is a way of me saying that I don't have clear answers to every one of those questions, and I do have a concern about the city's, I don't have, concern is not the right word, I want to look further into the city's ongoing authority to assess under this benefit district. And I don't have an answer to that question at this point in time, a clear-cut one.
Yeah, and I agree that, I think this specific ordinance is very vague, and you can interpret it differently, and I just want the coun, the legal council to tell us how to interpret that ordinance.
And I understand there's a sense of urgency with this particular property and-
Because you want to break ground, and so you have to decide whether you're going to break down ground as part of Marysville Township or, or as part of City of Marysville. Correct?
I mean, before we can get a building permit, we have to know our sewer plans, and we have to know our sewer plans before we become City of, City of Marysville or not.
And so, Marlene Stamm has already said that it can go either way.
Correct.
So it's-
And that, just to add on the list in my head of, of legal issues here and questions, that's another one, is the, the interrelationship with the county. I mean, I've had, I haven't had any conversations frankly with this particular person at the county, the sanitarium, and there's, you know, words of may or shall, you know, there's requirements, and then there's options, and who holds those options? I mean, I, and I don't have a clear understanding at this point of, of that particular issue, issue too, as it relates to the county and its involvement.
So if, just for instance, if we would waive the 5848, would you become part of the city and get a grinder pump?
Probably, we'd lose resistance, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I, I talked to three different people over the weekend that were out in that area, and they all had to pay the assessment, and they all had to put in grinder pumps. They were not happy when they found out that we were thinking about just doing away with that assessment for people.
I think if you read the ordinance that's in the code book-
I don't, I have not read the ordinance, but I'm going off of what they were told when they built out there in the tent of the ordinance. They were told that they, once they were annexed and they got the assessment, they had 10 years to pay it off. Nobody ever said anything about any kind of sunlight, sunset clause in there, and they were never told-
Well, I believe if you read, if you read the ordinance, it can say that.
Hold on, hold on. They were never told that if they just waited it out, they could just annex later on and not pay any assessments. It's not, it's not right to not charge certain people assessments.
I recommend you reading the ordinance before you make any kind of accusation.
I'm telling you what the, what-
How people feel, and I'm saying what the ordinance says.
I'm telling you how people feel out there, they do not feel it's fair that we're going to not charge people assessments when everybody else out there has paid assessments to be part of that.
Not everyone else had to add grinder pumps to-
Yes, they, a lot of them did, most of them did out there.
Okay.
The ones I talked to did.
Well, I guess Dexter, you're not going to get an answer tonight. So I apologize that we don't have an answer. We have more questions than answers at this time, right?
Yeah, well, and my concern is the city doing what it is allowed to do, it's not necessarily, if there are options, to make that decision for the city, if there are multiple options. And it's not necessarily to tell an individual property owner what to do if they have options, certainly not that. I don't want to confuse my role here in the, in the advice and to whom I'm giving it to. But what I can, I guess, tell the governing body tonight about this particular issue is, it's been brought up now a few times, it sounds like. I will get with whether it needs to be Austin, the city administration, whether it needs to be county representatives in the interest of the city. You know, and if there is some urgency for the city to do that, then I will, I mean, I will work with that urgency, but, I mean, I, I mean, I may not be news that this particular individual or any other individual wants to hear, but, you know, it's a reality, just like it may be reality, I'm not talking about this specific instance, but generally, that some people get taxed differently than others based upon that particular tax assessment, and that's just a reality that I think we're operating under potentially in this case. So, I mean, I'll leave it at that, that I intend to, I guess, stay in contact with Austin about it, and we, we spoke recently about it, and I got information from him that I didn't have before, which is instructive as it relates to this issue, so.
I guess, is there any kind of timeline that you have, an idea on? I mean, ideally, we're trying to, possibly by the end of this week, the guy that's, the people that are supposed to be doing dirt work are trying to get it, hit in before people start getting in the fields, because once people have crops out of field, they want to start doing their own dirt work.
Yeah. Well, what I guess I intend to do is get with Austin tomorrow and talk to him about, from the city's side, what it has to do with you in order for you to be able to break ground. I mean, I, I don't think that the city should unnecessarily be an impediment to somebody if it doesn't have to be building. That is not in any way suggesting, you know, what the legal opinion is on the issue of an assessment, the issue of, do you have to, or what options you have for connecting to the city sewer line. Those are just answers I don't have yet, but I, I will work with them immediately so that-
It's not as vague.
If it can be done, it, it'll be done sooner rather than later for you.
Okay.
I don't think I could say any, commit any further than that.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Under business and discussion items, I do want to do a coma clarification. And at a recent fire and police committee, Councilmember Barnes and Pippiya noted that they had attended a coma training and understood that all council members could attend and participate in all committee discussions. I called the League of Kansas Municipalities and discussed this with Deborah Barnes, who led the coma training, that the council members Barnes and Pippiya attended. Clarification, and this is typed out from Deborah Barnes. I started it, and then she modified it, and I'll be happy to give you a copy. It says, "All persons, including all council members, are welcome to attend committee meetings. However, noncommittee council members should not participate in the discussion and should not have any interactive communication with the committee. This is because this sort of intervention turns into a serial meeting of the council. A serial meeting counts as an open meeting under coma. A serial meeting happens once the communication collectively involves a majority of the council, the communications share a common topic, and the discussion is intended by any and all of those participating to reach agreement on a matter that would require binding action to be taken by the council." So, for example, a council member that is not on the fire and police committee may attend the fire and police committee but cannot participate in the meeting in any manner. In the past, I have always, always requested noncommittee council members to sit away from the table where the committee is discussing the business of the committee to prevent any interactive communication with noncommittee council members. I believe it is prudent to continue that policy. If you have any questions regarding this, please contact Deborah Barnes at the League. I have sent her this coma explanation, and she confirmed that the clarification is correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I get a copy before you leave?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So that's just clarification, I'm not aware of any, oh, I skipped the LMI. Okay. So this letter, I drafted the letter, and then Darlene rewrote it, she reorganized the letter, but basically, it says the same thing. I will read how she revised it, just for you guys to hear it. She basically took paragraph two and made a paragraph one, I'll just read it. "Recently, the city conducted a random confidential income survey in Marysville and successfully qualified to apply for community development block grants from the Kansas Department of Commerce. The city is now designing a new fire station and hopes to receive a 2020 CDB grant to offset part of the cost to the city taxpayers. Second paragraph, the governing body of Marysville is considering improvements to the perimeter roads of South 11th Road, Keystone from 11th to 12th Road, and South 12th Road. The city is investigating outside funding sources such as CDB grant to fund the improvements. I met with the Marysville Township Board to explain the CDBG requirement that the grant area must be expanded to include all Marysville Township homeowners with driveway access onto the perimeter roads. I received board permission for the city to conduct," and she put an LMI survey, but we always reference, we, in our cover letter before, we reference it as a family income survey. "So your family income survey is enclosed with a return envelope, your confidential information will be used for the CDBG grant application. For this expanded CDP grant area, the city needs 100% homeowner participation." And then Austin, one of the last paragraph, just to contact him, just him at City Hall, right?
Yeah.
Just you, because there's only going to be nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll work.
If you have any questions. So I would pull my phone number, and it'd just have my name, which is what, how the other one went out. So this is just to find out if we can utilize a target area, it's not committing anything other than getting the information. Did you guys have any changes to the redraft by Darlene?
Do you want to make copies for me, so they can actually see it, or?
Well, it's basically the same information, she just made it sound, she re, but as long as what's in here, they're not opposed to, it's basically the same thing, kind of massaged a little bit, wouldn't you say that, Darlene?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I did.
Okay. So are you guys okay with sending this letter out to see if we can qualify for this target area?
Yes.
So how about if you make a motion to send out the revised letter to those specific homeowners? So can I have that motion?
I'll make my so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau. All right. Let's see. All right. I'm not aware of any notices or hearings. And then next item is a consent agenda?
I did put this on the table. Deb just forgot to put it in the packet for us. It was done. I thought maybe it was something.
Do you want to include this in the clerk's report?
Yeah, that's why I gave it to them.
Okay. So these two pages, I asked her where they were. I didn't know if it was intentional or not.
I think she just missed it, no.
So if you would include that when you make your motion to include the statement of expenses and revenues to be included in the clerk's report.
Move to put the statement of expenditures and revenues in the consent agenda report.
And to approve the consent agenda?
And to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The only other thing I, and I talked to Cindy about it, and I, on page eight, the debt is a little bit overstated, which she said she'll fix that. And then, I guess I want a clarification, Cindy, this, at the, where it says municipal court, I'm on page eight, on municipal court, where it says 10-year total. So these are everything less than 10 years?
Ten years, mm-hmm. Ten years and younger.
And so did you write off everything over 10 years?
No. Libby, the, the attorney, wrote that off.
So, so they did write off, so they wrote off everything greater than 10 years?
Everything greater, well.
And then they wrote off this 98, 84 ones less than?
The stuff that was way over 10 years, we weren't dealing with at all, anyway. This is this, they wrote off stuff that was uncollectible.
Okay.
Though, it was written off that was less than 10 years old. That's how, which was $9,980.
Right. That's the one that's less than 10 years old.
Right.
They also wrote off something that was over 10 years old.
Right, exactly.
And that this total given here only includes items that are 10 years or less. Do I have it?
Correct. That is correct.
So I just wanted to make sure you guys understood all that.
Yeah, the court did that.
Oh, yeah. That's from municipal court.
Yeah, that's from municipal court, yeah. We did.
All right. Did you guys have any questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau. All right. The next item is appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3706, an amount of $186,917.30.
Second.
Are there any questions? I had two. I, and I emailed them to Austin, but I just wanted everybody to hear. My, one of my questions was on Larson. You know, this is the final payment. And remember, some of the people on North Street were unhappy with their yards? And so I asked, you know, we're making that final payment, so basically, we're walking away from improving anything else. And I asked Austin if he felt like we addressed all their concerns.
That wasn't the question, but they went through and did a checklist on everything. Our guys walked through with them, did a checklist on everything they didn't do yet. They completed everything on that checklist, fixing all the, the seating and the grasses, and concrete that needed to be fixed. And Tony, in the water suit department, said he felt they completed it all.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with that, that you had paid attention to that.
I asked them also.
And the other, only other question I had is that, that street plumbing, when we, when I talked to, when I talked to Kent, for, for boring that, that water line for KDOT, I did not think we were going to.
How much is it listed for?
$31.50.
So we're paying the bill, and KDOT's reimbursed.
We will be reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if you told me it would be reimbursed.
I said, we're paying a portion of that. A portion of that, like $600, is going to be our cost, because we needed the contractor to locate some utilities. Other than that, the rest of that goes to KDOT.
KDOT will come back. Okay. All right. Do you guys have any questions, or do you want to share the major expenses, Darlene?
Well, we didn't have.
It was lower.
Too many of the large ones. Like you were talking about the final payment to Larson Construction, and that was $31,040. And then the, another large one was the employee payroll of $53,142.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oh, yes.
And I'd ask if Chris Grauer ever paid us for the damage he did to the airport.
He did, didn't he?
He did.
He did?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Aideau? All right. Austin?
First thing is the ADA ramp project. Included the revised plans for the, for the project. Also updated the cover page, but I forgot to put two ramps instead of one on the southwest corner of 12th and Walnut. So I updated that on the one that would go out if we're going to send this out. So I added 12th and Walnut, removed ramps at 13th Carolina, as well as 9th and Elm. There's a contractor that's already expressed interest to bid this project. I do have concerns about fitting this in this year, so I made the end date May 29th of 2020. Just so, I mean, that would get on somebody's books if they bid for either between now and next year. So.
So the question is whether we want to leave it that far out?
It, no.
And if we want to bid it at this time?
Yeah, if you, if you want to, yeah, both questions.
Okay. So do we want to go in and bid out this ADA project? I think we're prepared to do it.
Yeah, I'd say just.
The only concern I have is, you know, we did add those three corners by the school, and now we have this construction that's creating problems at the school. Do we really want them tearing up those corners at 12th and Walnut before the C clip projects done? What are your thoughts about that?
Well, we can have them hold that to the last. And if they, it could work out where the only thing left would be the intersection, so they, all that cross traffic would be available to go. So we, I could signify that to the contractor to, to make that the last one.
Thoughts? Do you want to, do you want to bid it? That's the first question. It's all prepared. I guess we should go ahead and bid it.
Yeah, I think we need to bid it.
And the second question is, are you okay with the finish date? Or do we, we could even have a start date in 2020 and get it bid and, and have this, but the school construction will all be done this fall, or around school. Even if they have to do the intersection, that will be in the spring.
Right.
If they don't get it done this fall.
Right.
So the school area will be kind of cleaned up within the next 60 workdays.
I think if we leave a bigger window of possibility that we might, that might positively impact the bids, because they'll know they can fit it in somewhere in that big window.
So expand behas May, June, July?
I think May 29th is good enough.
Yeah, I think May is probably sufficient.
Okay.
So you're okay to bid it, and you're okay to push it to May 29th as a final date?
Yep.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve the ADA ramp bid project?
Move to move forward with going out for bid on the ADA ramp project.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau?
All right. And then the next one is waterline bid. We had one bid, and normally I would hold it, but we asked if he would be okay if we opened it. If, if you guys denied this bid, we'd just combine this project with next year's project. So we would be holding off on bidding anyways. So I wanted you guys to have all the information. The bidder was Carlson Utility out of Topeka. They bid $216,758 to bore the entire project. This bid came in $57,808, higher than the engineer's estimate at $158,950. Like I said, the bidder did not mind that we shared this information with you. So the positives, I think, if we were to accept this now, would be to get the project done, rather than add it on to the next year's project, which I feel is already a pretty big project.
What project is that?
Jenkins, wait, let's see. This one's Jenkins. Laramie, 15th to 20th, and there's some interconnecting that we are looking at doing between, actually, this project, which we were going to set this project up to connect to the, to the next project anyways. So it's all for the one connection we saw on 17th, I believe, yeah, that we would need. So I feel if we add it on to the next year's project, that would draw that one out to a longer time span than, than I like, especially experiencing the Larson, or the, this last project.
Where we added on.
Where, where we added on. Where it was a nine-block project that.
Yeah, but there was some stuff in that project that got added after the project got going, too. So I mean, if, if you stick to the project as is laid out.
That's how, that's how we designed this one. It's, it's a strict three blocks, did not interconnect. We're going to keep that mantra as we keep, as we go, stick to what is lined out.
Because I'd rather do what we're supposed to do and then come back again, you know, go out for bids again.
Right. Correct.
Austin, what are those three blocks again?
Jenkins, 17th to 20th.
So when you look at that bid versus the estimate, the main thing was that Ada's PVC water line, the $11,002, because the estimate was $49,000, and the bid was $104,000. So that's where most of it is. And so I emailed Tony, and he said, he's here. He said, the 40, he estimated at $45 per linear foot, and he says it's closer to what the bids were last year for the North Street Phase Two. He said Carlson chose to directional drill the line and use a higher directional drilling price. They do not have their own drill rig, so that, they would have to sub that out. So that's why it's so high.
In a way, I'd like to see this project done, but for the $57,000.
It's like 35, 36 percent.
6% over, over price. So, I mean, I can't see paying that much more for the same project.
Hey, Tony, will you come up here for a minute?
But that's my take on it.
I agree.
Just to understand more, when you said this directional drill the line, you're saying there's an alternate way to do it?
We, we give them the option, when we put in place after the line item, we give them the option to open, cut, or directional drill.
Okay. So open, cut is.
Now, I know Deep Creek, when they did the first half of North Street, they, they bored.
So that's, that's how we've done almost every waterline project probably the last 10 years. We say in place, and they have the option to do what they want.
So that $45 per linear foot was on a board, a bid?
It was the in-place item, though. It was either option.
It was in place.
So it's similar to Phase One and Phase Two of North Street, where Phase One, Deep Creek decided to bore it, because they had a machine available, and Phase Two, Larson didn't bore it, because they did not have a machine available, so.
So were you surprised to see this high of price?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, $57,000 is pretty significant.
It is. It is.
Do you think if, Tony, I mean, that's just a guess, but do you think if we bid it again in the spring, somebody would probably come in at that, closer to your estimate?
I think so. I would certainly, I mean, the other two, I had three contractors that picked up plans, and the other two reported they just, they're too busy.
Too busy, okay.
They didn't want to take a risk of adding another job.
Okay. Well, at least this is ready to bid out again in the spring. I mean, it's all ready to go.
I would bid it this winter. I mean.
You'd bid it this winter for spring?
I'd bid the whole project, even the Laramie Street's project. Just put it all together. It's one big deal, more bang for your buck.
That's what I want, right there, is to combine the two projects.
For the mobilization and stuff.
So we can get, well, yes, that.
Mobilization, yeah.
And we can get what we planned this year and what we planned next year. And it's all in one area. If you're connecting, interconnecting the two, there's this line on for connect to existing system. That's when we tie it back into the old lines. Right. That's three bucks, $3,000 a pop. So if you're interconnecting already in the next, in the big project, you can eliminate. That cost. Eliminate those. There's, at least three of them probably you won't have to do. It's $9,000.
All right. So from that standpoint, we need to go ahead and work up the next one and get it out as soon as possible? That's kind of.
Right. And I've already, we've already been working on proceeding with that. So we'll have a cost estimate from CES to do the engineering for the other side of the project.
What do we put in the budget for that water line for 2020? I didn't bring my budget.
300.
300?
Yeah.
So this will be a massive project?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tony. Thanks for coming.
Tony, question for you. Do you think that'll be too big a project for somebody?
I doubt it, especially if you can bid it early and be flexible in your time.
You think a close date by mid-November?
Oh, yeah. Especially if you bid early. Yeah, if you gave them all, oh, you mean.
You mean all next year? What are you saying?
Yeah, by November next year.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to go on that freeze thing. How about October?
Well, no. I mean, if you had November 1st as your cutoff.
Okay, I could do November, not November.
No. If we go out, you know, have everything ready so that bids can go out in April. You know, so we got a contractor on board by April.
Yeah.
They'd have all summer to work on.
That's why Carlson did. They had, they had a job in Topeka also, but its completion date was in April. So they, they were flexible. They could say, oh, if we get this one, they can come here first and then go back to Topeka. If they don't get it, they'll go to Topeka. So I think as you give that big range next year, I think opens it up.
Okay. So I need a motion to reject this bid?
Make a motion to reject the bid for the waterline replacement on Jenkins Street from 17th to 20th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau?
All right. Next one up is KDOT put a, a call for projects to be funded by the Transportation Alternative Grant. The last round, we submitted North 7th Street Corridor, 7th and Broadway, and Broadway in front of Old Cromy's Market. And we were funded for 7th and Broadway. We have enough information for Broad, the Broadway portion of it, for the Brick Street. But we feel like we need more information to do the 7th Street Corridor. Following a meeting we just had earlier today, I have a little change of perspective as well. For the 7th Street Corridor, do we want to try to do a, a master plan ourselves? We just had a conference call with K-State. They said they were going to do that whole, look at that whole area and sort of design how they think it feels. Do we want to wait for that perspective to come out and just go with what we got, the full information? How does the council want to proceed? We need some guidance on that.
So the only thing they awarded us was a 7th Street Broadway hump, basically.
That hump, yes.
Remember, we did Phase One, Two, Three, Four?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And they gave us the smallest one.
That was Phase Two.
Which is better than nothing.
Which is true.
Yeah.
Anything, we get it's better than nothing.
But to follow up on that, and do you want to report on that commit, that meeting today, as long as Austin started? Did you write anything up, Darlene?
Yes, just kind of a basic outline.
Yeah, it was, it was, there was, it was called a Zoom meeting with the Professor Blake Bellinger.
Yes.
And Assistant Professor Sushi.
And Maggie from KSU, and, and she deals with a resources roadmap, and an Andy, and he identifies dollars that can be used, like federal, state, foundation sources. So those were the people from K-State and the government. And from the city, it was Austin, Carla, Cindy, and myself who participated. Chamber of Commerce was. Chamber of Commerce was Bob Huff and Patty Holly. Nick Stoll was for a short time representing Partnership for Growth. There will be 40 students who will be coming here on October the 7th. They will be here from 9:00 to 5:00 that day. They will do a driving tour with six cars. They will meet at the City Hall and then we're going to find some various speakers to talk about history of Marysville museums, economic development, or some of the subjects. And they'll have lunch. At 1:30, the students will all come back and meet in smaller groups to talk about what they've seen. And then from 2:30 to 4:30, the two classes will meet with local residents, business owners, nonprofits, kind of diversified group of people from Marysville. And at 4:30 will be a wrap-up and Carla will give a little message there. Now, on November the 6th, the two classes of students will come back and there will be a open house for the public to visit with them. And then they will show ideas and designs and visit with the public.
So they did share that Sush says they were done with the housing study, the study, and they'll be giving us a report on that. So the two that they're going to come back for is the urban design and then the alternate uses of the depot. So they'll be split into those two groups. So obviously, the depot and Seventh Street, going back to our initial, how we got into this, is, well, they'll be coming up with different ideas on how to utilize that space. So it would seem kind of foolish for us to try to submit that one right now. But it sounds like on the, on the 7th, we're going to have to get a lot of, they use stakeholders, different representatives to come in and just to share, you know, business leaders, business owners, residents, economic development, all that. So I think that's going to be a big day for our community to have these students and to bring ideas. They're also going to do another, a couple Zoom meetings that we need to make sure the appropriate people, one is, will be with the depot, so we'll have to make sure the depot people are in that meeting. It's kind of the pre-meeting before they do the exhibit meeting. And then the other one is on the urban design and we'll have to make sure critical people are on that meeting as well. So with, and again, the reason I brought that up was because we were talking about Seventh Street. So I don't think it's wise right now, if they're going to do this big study, you know, and present it in November, to present anything for November 1st and wait and see what they come up with. The only thing I wanted to share about that meeting was, they talked about FEMA. And Sarah Kestner suggested I contact them, you know, they were talking about the housing and what to do with the FEMA lots, and she suggested that I give it to the K-State people. So that's what I did. And then Austin and Cindy sent them the deeds and whatever, the FEMA deeds. And so what Sush said was that the deeds say nothing about FEMA, they say nothing about flooding, and they say nothing about floodplain. And so they recommended us hiring a land use attorney to change the deed. Any thoughts about that?
I don't know that that's a bad idea. I don't know that, I don't think you need a land use lawyer to change the deed, maybe to negotiate how to do that. What I was intending to do, and I spoke to Austin about this briefly today, was see if other cities have gone through this process, and surely, surely they have.
Well, that was my question, every time I talk to FEMA, every time I talk to North Central Regional Planning Commission, we're not unique in that we have flooded houses bought out by FEMA.
Right.
But the key thing that I took away from is that I had never read the deeds to see that none of those three points are in the deed. And so she recommended, and she said it was really out of her bailiwick because it was a legal issue, to get a land use attorney and have them contact the regional FEMA MAP Coordinator. That would be the first step.
Did she mention the federal law it referenced in the deed?
No.
And, and their ability to enjoin a breach of any of those covenants in the deed. For instance, if you developed contrary to what those restrictions in the deed say, the federal government can immediately come in and stop that pursuant to the deed. I mean, it's kind of a catch-all.
Yeah, well, the key thing...
Recourse for the federal government to come in and say, no, you don't get to do anything.
So we need to change the deed?
Well, right, that's the general bottom line. And I guess what, what I don't know is exactly how to do that, how possible that is. And engaging in the office, FEMA's office, is certainly a step. Perhaps employing, you know, an attorney that specializes in this or has done this before. And that's, we're just trying to find somebody that has had experience in. Does this ever get changed, or is this just FEMA holds it for perpetuity without?
Yeah, I mean, look at all the hurricanes. FEMA comes in, does all these buyouts, you can't tell me none of them come and rebuild. I think we're, somehow we're caught on something that we need to figure out how to fix.
Mayor, I remember some meeting, and I don't recall, what, what one it was, that the speaker said, there's only been like one instance across the United States that any, that the city was able to get property out of FEMA, out of the FEMA lots. But I don't require, recall what meeting it was or who the speaker was.
Yeah.
And one thing I was intending to do, and it sounds like I'm getting sort of specific construction maybe to do this, was to put it out to the Kansas City Attorney's List or, if it's happened in Kansas. And it may not be, maybe we have to go outside the state of Kansas.
Maybe we have to go to Louisiana.
Yeah, to, to find an example of it that may, that may be able to be...
Yeah, it's a federal program, so if we have to go to Louisiana, we go to Louisiana.
South Carolina?
South Carolina, Florida, there's lots of choices around hurricanes. Okay, so I was just optimistic that maybe we could do something, but we'll let the attorney take it from there. So all that discussion to come back to, I think we should leave the Seventh Street Corridor open at this time, but I do think we should, our Seventh and Broadway is ready to submit as a TA project. I think we should submit it, the brick.
Oh, the, not Seventh and Broadway, but Broadway in front of Cromies.
Oh, Cromies, well, yeah, what?
500 blocks.
5 to 6.
5 to 6, yeah.
5 to 6, yeah.
5 to 6, because that's all ready to go, we've submitted it once. And so, Tony, based on that, is there something we need to revise in that to make it more...
I think so. I'll check the cost again and think we'll just have to remove the face of that a lot.
Discussion? And just have that one in there? Okay, so would you guys like to, do you want to bring a new, you want to bring something to us, or do you want to approve submitting it, knowing it's almost, we've almost...
It's due November 1st, we'll bring, we'll bring something back out.
Okay. You guys agree that we should pursue with that project?
Yes.
Yes, consistent with council?
People ask about it a lot, why we don't do something about it.
Yeah. Do you think it'd be crazy for us to add that street from 13th to 14th to it?
14th to 15th?
14th to 15th, yeah. No?
No, I, I think...
I mean, it's in the plans for next year, so...
I think we were going to put it, turn it to, probably concrete. So just leave the brick one in there? Leave it as we have it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. The next one, KDOT has a new cost share, shared cost program. They recently created it to help entities with projects that aren't normally covered by other KDOT programs. These projects include transportation projects that help mobility, encourage economic development, and retaining or recruit businesses. KDOT is prioritizing projects with over a million in KDOT contribution. I believe that their contribution only covers, and if I'm reading this wrong, the construction costs, so engineering would be on us. And the local match required is 15%, so KDOT is prioritizing a $1.15 million project. But that's not saying we can't submit or pursue something less. So this is something that came out, I wanted to discuss with you guys. One of their due dates was October. I don't believe we can get all the information together that would be a good submission for a project. They also, they have reoccurring submission dates. They said they'd keep doing this twice a year, March and October, they would continue to accept projects for this program. So I wanted some guidance from the council on what, how we should move forward, what projects you guys have. I did kind of mold some around the 11th Terrace, well, 11th Road and Keystone and 12th Road, which is not a normal KDOT project, came to mind also. But that doesn't include the economic development portion. So if you think about economic development, possibly the 11th Terrace extending that up to, if we wanted to pursue that venture, that would also be just a possibility, not a, not something, I mean, just if you guys wanted to think about that.
What about the, like we talked about, possibility of an industrial park at the airport? Would that be something, a road through there, would be something we could apply for? Would that qualify under this or not?
Yeah, yeah, because it's, I think to the letter where their economic, their, what did I say, retaining or recruiting new businesses, I think that would qualify.
Well, I think, since it specifically says normally not covered under KDOT, other type KDOT programs, and encourage economic development, I think we have a great cause for 11th Road, Keystone, and 12th Street Road, because that would be, by improving that street, would encourage people to build out there. There's no, there's no question about it. And I think we could definitely sell it on economic development. They want a project that costs over a million dollars. That's definitely an over a million dollar project. I got the application, I printed off the application and it's, it's only a six-page document. And you are right that we have to pay, the non-participating costs are the engineering, the right-of-way acquisition, which we wouldn't have, utility adjustments, which we would have stormwater there, and, but the construction. But if you think about this, they said that it's really aimed at rural, urban and rural. That was one of the things here, let me see. It says to help with both rural and urban areas. And I was like, well, that's great. And it says it is eligible, including roadways. And again, not eligible for other KDOT projects. Obviously, I don't think that 11th Road, 12th, the deadline is October 11th. But I think we would be crazy not to pull together something and put it in. If you don't submit, you get nothing. And so we could get maybe CES involved and get us some estimates and get the stormwater there at where Keating Drive is, we'd have to redirect that stormwater there. But, you know, it's not a very complicated, have you looked at this, Tony?
I just briefly saw an email.
Did you look at the application process?
Not very deeply.
Yeah, there, I mean, the first two pages are basically contact, yes or no questions. It's not, it's not that complicated of a form, but if they have 11 million right now to give out and we don't make an application, we'll never get it. They said guaranteed 11 million, but up to 50 million. I, I think we would be foolish not to jump through hoops to get this done. Your thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
Should we jump?
Free money.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't...
If you've got time for the engineering, it's a thing.
It's not free money.
Well, it's not.
It's not free money.
When you get a million-dollar grant, that's...
Grants cost money. This is probably federal dollars, which costs, makes the project even more.
It's, it's a funding source that we don't have otherwise funding for at this time, right? It's a funding source for something we don't have funding for right now.
Madam Mayor, the only thing that I start to get concerned about is we're starting to spend a lot of money on engineering for grant applications. I mean, I worry about getting so many applications out there and spending so much money on engineering, not actually doing any projects. I mean, at what point, I mean, you understand, I mean, kind of what I'm saying. And then we've got the fire station, and then we've talked two or three different grant, different processes for 11th and 12th and Keystone now.
But that won't be till 2021. The earliest we can get that funding is 2021.
Okay.
For 11th...
Are we going to not apply for the CDV grant?
That one, yeah, but we can't get it, yeah, but we can't...
Are we applying for both grants for the same project, I guess?
Well, this one would be, this would be done first.
Okay.
And if we didn't get it, we could always come, apply for the CDVG.
My, my only concern is, and Austin, you'd know better than me, but if, if we put together a slapdash application, does that harm us in any future applications?
If it's the same people reviewing it, I have that same fear.
That'd be the downside to me of, yeah, give it a shot, but then you don't want it to reflect poorly later if it's something we have a chance again, or a better chance, or we have more time. That'd be my only real immediate concern, I guess.
Do we have 11th Road laid out?
We don't have any of it laid out. I mean, well, actually, I'll ask the, do we have anything on 11th Road?
Tony, you want to come to the podium?
I mean, if we have 11th Street engineered...
11th Road.
Or, excuse me, 11th Road.
That's a good point.
11th Road engineered, I don't know why we can't jump ahead and at least see if we can fund 11th Road.
I know, but if, if the concept is that they prefer million-dollar projects, the whole U makes sense.
I understand that.
How, how much would it take to engineer Keystone and 12th Road?
I mean, probably all you really need at this point is the cost estimate, right? I mean, we're going to generate an estimate large enough to cover the things that will get engineered if you get funded. I mean, we're just trying to get a scope of a number.
Yeah, because it says preferred minimum KDOT contribution, preferred is a million.
Okay.
We'll take a million.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, what was the match on? Did they recommend a higher?
15% or...
It says, "Minimum of a 15% non-state cash match is required. Additional consideration will be given in project applications to commit more than the minimum required. For projects qualifying for the one-time 50 million, a minimum 25% match." So I guess, you know, the 11 million is the first step and the 50 million is the second step. So, I mean, if we have to, I don't know how they come back to us and say, will you, or do we just do the cost estimate and see if it's 15 versus 25?
I think, I mean, I think you would choose what, how much you want to contribute. I will say, we start with the big project here.
Well, it depends how much it is, yeah.
If it's $2 million, you might say, well, yeah, we'll do, we want to do the whole thing, that's 1 million, KDOT 1 million. City, there's 50% match, that's, would probably rank really high. Or you could say, cut back to this point and then it's a 1.5 million dollar project and you're contributing 33%. Just find the whole cost and then cut back to what you want to contribute.
Yeah, well, even if we just make the attempt for the 15% match, it's worth a shot, right? If we don't want to commit the 25%?
We can always come back at a later day.
And redo it in March.
And redo it and go to a 20 or 25 or whatever percent we need to, I mean, if, if that comes along.
I just hate, I, I think the key thing, and I know you've said this before, that, you know, larger cities have an engineering department, that they have things ready, ready to submit as soon as this is open. But this specifically said that to help both rural and urban areas, well, we're a rural one, that if we can jump on early, there might not be that many rural ones submitting.
So how much would the engineering fees be?
To design the project or to get the application in?
For this, for the application?
Not, I mean, it's pretty minimal because we've done, we've done 11th Road, we've done part of 12th. Yeah, part of Keystone, I'd have to see what all we've already done. So I can't tell you, I mean, I can't let you know. I can't tell you, I mean, I couldn't let you know.
I mean, not several thousand dollars.
So do you want me to get rolling with Tony on, on, do you want to, okay, so, do you want to design the whole U if, if we can, or do you want to just start with 11th?
Well, the 11th Road is the one that most likes, is owned by both sides. So if we're ever going to get CDVG money, it's going to be 11th Road. The question, we're never going to get, we, well, we're doing this targeted in hopes to get Keystone and 12th Road.
Right.
But 11th Road is our go-to for CDVG.
Correct.
So to me, this is a project, we want to do the whole U because it specifically says, you know, options that might not have any other funding sources.
Does that application talk about secondary owners? I mean, was it secondary sponsors?
Secondary contact person, primary contact, private business, railroad.
Property owners is probably what it is.
And ask, and other federal funds involved, active project, other investments.
Well, if we're gonna get funding for it, we need to do more than just a U. We need to take that handle down to Keystone or to limestone too, in front of the.
Right, we would include that, yeah. Down to the second entrance of Keystone, yeah.
To Timberlake, yeah.
So I personally think we should jump on it. It can hurt us, an opportunity of a million dollars. And I think we never have come to grips on what we want the surface to be in concrete. I think that's a mistake. You're gonna do a three, now wait, Kevin, think about that. If you do concrete, it's a $3 million project and it costs to us is 15%, 15 to 20, 25% of that.
And how soon will we have to chip seal it or do big patches? Oh wait, not at all. I'm agreeing with Kevin, 100% concrete.
Did we ever price the difference between concrete again and asphalt again, just to have it on the table?
So, so just put this in perspective, $3 million, 15% is $750,000. We'd have to come up with $750,000 if we concreted. Now, we did get a bid or an estimate, I'm sorry, what would you call it? Estimate from Hall Brothers?
To do the.
12-inch.
Just, it was 12 inches of base stabilization, which is including mixing concrete into the, to the rock to stabilize the base and laying four inches of asphalt on top of it.
So that, their ballpark number there was $900,000. Then you add the engineering, you add the stormwater, we're definitely going to get over a million dollar project.
But if you're gonna do, I won't speak to the, I won't speak to engineering. It's not my job.
So it's 100, so we'd have to come up with $150,000. But think about that, coming up with $150,000 and you being given a million.
If we were to do, let's, let's say the council wanted to do the hole in concrete and it was a $3 million project. Where was I going with this? Would you design that and like do it in phases so they could go, okay, we'll do? Or would that be feasible?
That, I don't know what they'll fund, you know, if they'll fund separate phases or they want one big project.
Because this is a new project, our new, new category.
I understand that's one. I mean, you could apply for different phases if you wanted, but it would be, we're gonna apply for this segment this year. And that's the whole thing that's going to be done, and then next year we'll move on.
And then it could be like the C-clip where we didn't get the second phase approved. And now we have half of it and not the other half. So.
Like you determine the phases based on what you submit. Not like TA where they.
Where they let you do, well, yeah.
You know, most people out there are going to be delighted to have a 12-inch asphalt base road. They're gonna be, I said, most of the people out there will be delighted to do a 12-inch asphalt road out there.
Right, and because they're so desperate for anything when we've made them forlorn so long. I'm sure when they originally chip sealed it, they were delighted too. But here we sit, 20 years on, regretting that decision. I don't want to sit 20 years on regretting another decision that was made to save money.
Well, it was a bit, there's a big difference between chip and seal on a 12-inch base.
Yeah, I, I agree, but there's nothing as good as concrete. There's nothing that's going to last that well, especially knowing the traffic it has.
Well, where are you going to come up with the half a million dollars co-pay?
That's another problem, but I'm saying if anything worth doing is worth doing right.
I think that, that you have to think that the asphalt that they're putting down there is the same asphalt they put on Alkeeta Road.
And the same they put on Highway 71 north of Seneca that's already rough. And they did it three, four weeks ago. I have no trust in, in the asphalt product when it comes to heavy traffic roads. I think concrete is absolutely the way to go.
Well, I think then, if that's the case, I think we need to have Jake Lauer come in and talk to these guys.
That's what they want.
Then we should also have somebody who does concrete work come talk to us, so it's apples and apples.
Yep.
I don't want, I mean, I don't need a one-sided sales pitch from anybody. I'd just assume if we're gonna weigh it, let's just weigh all of our options.
I mean, if they're gonna mix concrete into the 12-inch base and then put four inches of asphalt on it.
That's what they said, eight inches of that concrete with the rock.
Just, just mixing, it basically, it makes.
It's a dry powder that they put in it.
Basically dries out the base, yes.
Yes.
Are you happy or not happy with that?
It will work to a degree, but along the edges, it will never hold. There's too much moisture that creeps in on it. Look at the way the township roads have been paved, look on the edges, they're all wet. They've been asphalted, they're all falling apart on the edges. Alkeeta Road's done it.
Hurkam Road's really bad.
Raymond Road's done it. You know, and all those roads are catching semi-traffic, tractor traffic, combines, all that. Same thing if these roads are going to catch out there because the farming community uses them.
And if this does develop like we are hoping will happen, it's just going to get more traffic than it has now.
I think just to interject a tiny bit. I think like compared into those county roads, I mean, they're just putting a top coat on it. They're not fixing base issues where, like this project would be a new, you fix the base and then put your asphalt surface on it. So I think compared to like the Hurkam Road and some of those, where the, where they're just, they're just slapping down two inches of asphalt over top of it. The base problems that were there were still there. That's why you get your edge failures. Can we do a combination of some concrete and some asphalt? I mean, like in, in my opinion, if, if we're gonna do asphalt, at least in front of Hometown should be concrete. I don't think asphalt's gonna hold up, they have a lot of.
Anywhere there's turning, especially heavy turning.
Yeah, it's bad there. You can make the argument maybe down 11th to the Bulldog Apartments Drive, maybe concrete.
Tony, are there two different places that have what you want done with the asphalt and what we want done with the concrete? So we can, we can actually go out and visualize them and see for ourselves?
Again, it's hard to compare because traffic's different on all roads. Except what was, you'd have to look, to me, look at two roads that were built brand-new to compare them.
10 years down the road, wouldn't be bad to look at them either, to be honest, because that's what our discussion is about, the longevity of it. So if you, if you know some of these roads, you know, I'd like to see them. Now, I mean, everything looks good when it's first done. Everything looks just wonderful. It's in the years to come with, like, like the winner that they're predicting for us. You know, we're gonna have those and then it's gonna have maybe not. And then some, some places put on salt, some places just use sand. I would like to see something, a comparison. If you can, if you can come up with something off the top of your head, not right now. Okay.
The interstate, for example, they go back and forth and I think whoever's, lobbyists are funding money to whoever. And they decide whether they're gonna do asphalt or concrete. I think they do both to appease everybody.
So you feel like the base that they proposed is pretty significant, the eight-inch base?
Yeah, I can't speak in particular to that, but I think if you were gonna do asphalt, you would, I mean, you'd have a full pavement analysis and design done, based on traffic counts. And you'd be doing a, a full pavement structure designed to support the loads that we anticipate it's gonna load.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be what Hall Brothers said. It'll be, it'd be what he figures the, the load would be.
Yeah, you do a geotechnical analysis. I mean, they come out and drill, I don't know how many spots, several spots during all, through all those roads and evaluate subgrade soils and, and then based on traffic counts, come up with an economical pavement structure. And they can get, can provide concrete and asphalt designs. We've got a month to get this all done? Uh, no. For the application, you're just gonna pick one and go with it. But I don't think that's gonna dictate what your final design would be. Obviously, probably not, unless you know you want asphalt, you want to pick concrete to make sure your costs are covered.
Well, I don't really want to do a program that we know we can't pay the co-pay. If we can't pay the match, I don't want to submit it, that would be foolish. So if we do a million dollar project, I know we can fund the $150,000. If you do a $3 million project, I don't know where the half a million's coming from. Again, a million, potential million dollars, you, to walk away from this, I think is foolish.
But not all that road will hold up with the traffic. Unlike Jason's, the first half of that road, like it is into Kramer's, needs to be concrete in through part of that.
Yeah, but it's already cracked. Didn't we have a crack out there from the concrete?
Oh, yeah, but.
Yeah.
It's cracked, it's not, it's not like unbound.
A crack in a concrete road's not a failure.
Yeah, it's not a failure compared to what a crack in an asphalt is.
I know, but it's still there, we didn't have a crack out there.
Can we mix the two like that, like you're talking about?
Huh?
Can we propose mixing the two, doing concrete to a certain point?
We can set up the project like that.
And then asphalt the rest? Because then you wouldn't be at 3 million, you wouldn't be at 1 million, be somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, well, 12th Road, we could do the entrance ramp, that would kind of make sense.
Because it needs to be widened anyway across there for your turn lanes and stuff like it is on 11th Road.
Yeah, so we, we could do that hometown lumber.
Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't, didn't KDOT have a grant for?
Their access management.
Yeah, on the access management.
Yeah.
We don't want to use that because this is for things not under other KDOT plans.
I'm just looking at another way to.
I know.
To fund that, to fund that first 300 feet in.
The, we could, we could combine the two. In fact, they spelled that out in the grant where.
Other KDOT funding?
One of the comments they made, they like projects that complement other KDOT projects. So if we get money for that entrance to widen it and to make it good right off the highway, because it's in the access management plan, we can complement that, the rest of that project complements that project.
I think we should do that. Because it specifically said describe any known KDOT or other project need to be, that may need coordination. I think that makes sense.
I mean, if we could tie two projects together and get money for that one plus money for the rest of it.
It's another program that they only do the construction portion of it, so it all evens itself out because you're doing the same thing.
Yeah, we're doing engineering regardless.
So now we have to apply for two things, access management for the entryway?
Sorry.
And, and this cost share for the rest.
Right.
Can you work on that? I think that's what we should do. I think that, that's a good compromise.
I'll go with it.
We'll go with that?
Yeah.
We ready to jump, Tony?
Yeah, so I guess direction to start.
The direction would be.
On a big, the big project.
The 12th Street, 12th Street would be a, a transactional manage, or access management plan.
203, yeah, that entrance.
That's just gonna get, yeah, a couple hundred feet off the road, probably.
At least pass through the entrance of Hometown, right? Actually.
Could you take it to the Hometown South property line?
I think you should, because that underground sewer thing is a pain.
Yeah.
And it's horrible right there. So, yeah, if we could take the concrete, you think we'll be able to qualify that for that TA or the?
If you're widening it, they're probably justify going back that far. Because they're gonna, we're, it's gonna, I don't know. I, I bet we could justify it, but all you gotta do is make it sound good, I guess.
Yeah, it'd be, because that ditch, it's all broken up really badly by that, that culvert. So, yeah, if we could build that in and that would be concrete and the rest would be this 12-inch base asphalt?
Well, whatever, they won't, it won't be what. Whatever's applicable to the, to the traffic load is what he'll design.
So what are you gonna do for the traffic load?
For the application and then?
For, if we get the application and we get to design it, he will design the road. He won't, he won't just take somebody's, the contractor's word for it. He will design the road according to what traffic is on it.
He who? Tony.
Tony. The consultant, whoever the consultant is.
Okay.
Tony stands right there.
I think most, yeah, do, like I said, do the geotechnical work and do the subgrade analysis and.
Okay, you guys okay with having him proceed with this project?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Tony, for showing up tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Tony. All right, next one on the list.
So just to clarify, so we want him, and maybe we should have a motion, we should probably have a motion for this. So we want him to do an access management plan, do the engineering for that for 12th Road South to Hometown Drive, right? First entrance?
Application, the application, not the engineering.
Application, okay. And then we also want him to do a KDOT cost share program application for the remaining 12th Road to the second, is that called?
To Timber Creek.
To Timber Creek.
Yep.
Keystone to 12th Road, or 12th Road to 11th Road. And 11th Road from Highway 36.
Oh, where the concrete ends.
From where the concrete ends to Keystone.
Correct.
Okay, who wants to make that motion?
I salute.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hedo, all right.
Uh, next one is the fire station land survey. Our architect from BG has recommended, we have the ground surveyed for the new fire station. This will help with estimating costs for the project and would have to be done with, if we get, they go to proceed with the project. BG submitted a proposal for the work to be done. The cost is $4,000. Again, if we don't, if we don't do it now, we're gonna do it eventually. It's gonna be, as long as we keep proceeding with this fire station, this is something that will be done. This, they asked because it would help them figure out how much dirt was gonna be taken out and how much. Basically, that's basically what it is. The dirt work that needs to be done to get it up and running.
Now, before anybody makes a motion, I think we do need to talk about that fire meeting, Fire and Police Committee meeting, because he worked up some new numbers and now the cost is up to almost 1.6 million. I just, you know, we need to be honest about, when we initially thought it was gonna be a million and then the, what, what we were talking about 1.2, and then he added the soft costs, soft costs, which are legal and financing, design, engineering, and construction inspection, and then grant administration. So it's almost up to 1.6, I want you guys to know that. Now, they, we've talked at the meeting and said, how can we reduce it? And the only way to reduce it is to take bays away, to actually take, there's no other way. I mean, he said that the only way, we took the concrete away in the front of the meeting room. We took the concrete away on the side of the building for parking. So the only thing left to reduce this cost is to take a bay away, or two. But one of our main purposes of having was to have all the fire trucks together and to open up space for our street department and city hall here.
I wish we had a drawing so everybody could see what we're talking about here. Like the ones we. know, like the ones we had, Clint gave to us.
They're right out there, front room.
Okay, but I mean right here, but after that meeting, you know, to have the commons area. And I can't remember how many feet the commons area would take up. Do you know, Austin?
What do you mean by commons area?
Well, the training room, the common area.
Training room.
Training area.
It's, that training area's big enough for 40 people to sit in, which is the fire department.
Okay, all right.
So can you read that number right there?
Yes, I can.
The kitchen was just kind of galley.
Hold on. I don't know if that's referencing, if that's referencing, but it says 22, 22 foot, 11 inches.
That's how much it is the width now.
That's what it says, and then 50 feet.
And then it says same depth.
That's not big enough for a bay.
No, it's not, it's not gonna make any difference.
No. I mean, if you put a bay in there, then you're not gonna have them for.
And it's 50 deep?
Yeah.
Something over 50 deep?
Is there any fundraising they can do?
Well, I'm sure there can be fundraising. The key thing is that when, when and if the money comes, we need to fund it, and then we can pay it back, but.
All seven other communities have.
How much?
Too many bays are in the Blue Rapids.
How the heck can you pay for that?
It's a 600,000 dollar max.
600,000.
A lot of our communities do fundraising.
It's got like nine bays.
So it will cost us a million dollars?
What?
I was wondering how much that Blue Rapids fire department cost. There it says nine bays, I think.
Well, that's ours is gonna have nine bays.
But it's, and a police department in it. Maybe that's, they got some extra funding.
You gotta remember that, that.
Hanover got a City Hall with this, too.
That was funded twice.
That's right.
It was half and half?
No, they did the half that sets on 77 at one dime, and then they did the north half at another time.
How much money do we have in the budget for the 2020 for the fire station? We have the 215 MBNI. What else?
It's in the fire.
I know, but I don't have my 2020 budget.
No, it's over $400,000.
There's no way to trim on those soft costs? Is this what I'm picking up?
Well, they said that's.
Soft costs seem out of hand.
They send, it, it, it's the max. They, they overestimate.
And it's required in the, to use those percentages, to use those percentages.
It's, yeah, they have set percentages that they.
To, when they submit the application, it's required to use those 6 and 7 percent.
It's almost 20% for soft costs.
Right.
So when I saw those numbers, I was like.
19 point something percent for soft costs.
Yeah, so we have 216,000 that we're gonna pull out of the BNI for the fire station. And, and you think we have how mu, well.
Over 400.
400 for the whole budget in 2020?
Combined, yeah.
I just wanted to share that with you now, before we proceed.
Do we have anything, again, dropping off next year that will loosen up any kind of extra funding? Nothing? Okay.
If you do the KDOT that you're talking about, when is that project?
Which KDOT?
How, when we have to come up with that?
2020.
2020 also?
Well, that's, um, $20,000 is what they're using.
So they might be 2021 budget?
What budget would it impact?
Right. I don't know that process since they just submitted this out. But we do have $200,000 sitting in there for 11th Road.
Right.
But, yeah.
Oh, in our budget?
Yeah, in our budget. For, for that.
And we have $80,000 from the rural water that's sitting that we can pull. So we have that 80 plus 200. So we have 280 to do our match for that.
They got a pumper truck over there if they want to baden up. We're putting money in against.
That's what I was just gonna look up. Our fire equipment reserve is 147. Is that what you have? Or here, it should be in this packet.
Or is that going to MER?
Well, it's the fire reserve specifically.
Fire equipment reserve.
So we have 147 in there right now. And we have a budget to go 3,000 every month.
Every month.
Including next year. So that'd be another 100,000, no, 36, about 50,000. So bringing it up to about $200,000. We can use CDVG monies for a fire truck, though.
That's true.
Just FYI.
We could always go out and get debt for, for the project. In fact, they kinda wanna know what we're gonna do with this. We have to tell them where the money's coming from, when we submit the application for the fire station.
Well, how much are we short at this point?
50 to, 5 to 600,000.
Well, we, so we have.
Well, that doesn't sound too bad, considering the whole.
It's 1.5.
Cost of the project.
Right. So let's say if it's 1 point, if it's 1.5, and they're gonna give us 6, then we have 900,000, and we have 450, maybe? So we'd have to come up with 450. If we do pull out of the fire equipment reserve, we'd have to come up with 250. 250's probably doable.
Do we wanna burn every single fund down to zero, though? I don't know.
Well, we can always get more debt if you wanna do that. I mean, it's your choice.
I think it'd probably be a bad idea to pull from the fire equipment reserve, just so we have that, I mean, just so we have it in case one of the fire trucks breaks down.
We can probably get a USDA loan for 450,000. Or is that the lowest interest rate we can get, probably?
A temp note is the lowest interest that you can get.
Temp? But temp notes only for five years.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can pay that 90,000 back per year, you think, out of the sales tax? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, it depends if you have to do the.
Because, right. Um, there's a couple different ways you could probably think about that. We could re-maneuver a couple mils over to the bond and interest and, and put, take 90,000, or, um.
450,000?
The, per, per year, whatever it takes per year, about 90,000. So that, what would that be right now? That would be, so three, three mil, three and a half mils.
Three and a half mil.
And move that over to bond and interest and pay for, pay for it that way.
That's 450,000?
Over five years, yeah.
If you take out.
That'd probably be a four, 375 to 400,000 dollar loan, not doing the complete math for the, for the interest rate.
You think a temp note would be cheaper than a USDA grant?
In the process, I mean.
Not grant, but.
Loan.
It'd be a loan. Um, I don't know the rules on USDA. I know they like the 10 and 20 and 40-year loans.
Longer.
The longer-term, large projects, but I don't know the ground rules completely.
Well, the one thing about this, this is a long-term project. I mean, you know.
Right.
Hopefully, it's a, at least a 50-year, at least a 50-year fire station.
Right, definitely. So.
And if you start taking out bays, then you're gonna wish you had them.
Right.
Yeah, I would need to put out that much money in it.
Right.
It's too small.
Well, that's what we specifically asked Clint, you know, like, how can we reduce this cost? And he said, the only thing we can do is take a bay away.
Are we, okay. Are we, we still wanna go forward with the, the fire station?
That's what I just wanted, a consensus of council, knowing that it was up to that amount. Before we do this topographical survey, I wanted to make sure everybody's eyes are wide open, right? Eyes are wide open? Okay. So that's all I, so now we're back to the.
Do you wanna do the survey now, or do you wanna wait for the survey? $4,000 now gets you a little, maybe a little refined cost, and you see that it won't take, it'll take $20,000 off the top, maybe.
We can hope and pray.
Knowing that we don't have to take so much dirt off, but, um, so that, they felt it really would help with the process.
They helped, they thought it would clarify the cost, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and we have to get the cost pretty tight for the CDVG application.
Right.
So to pay the, if we're gonna go through with the project, we should go ahead and do this.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd just like to see some kind of protection for the city that we eliminate. The figure keeps going up, but then all of a sudden, we agree to do it, and then, oh, hey, King's X, we gotta put these change orders in. What protects us that when we say we're gonna do it for that, that's gonna be the figure instead of every time we turn around, we got another 18 or another 28,000 or 40? It just keeps going on. It's been doing that for years. Change order, change order.
I hate change orders, too, just to.
Well, they shouldn't be there. These contractors should be able to bid what they're doing, and we should stay with what we want to begin with, not make changes that affords them the ability to come charge us more money.
Well, this will actually assist in that, won't that? Help us to help determine.
Assist is not good enough. We would like, I'd like to see for, for the people of this city, I'd like to see a fact that we bought something we paid for, we get what we paid for, and we don't get asked for more. Because they've already bumped this up from 1.2 to 1.6, and it isn't ever gonna stop.
Well, I didn't realize the soft costs weren't in there till this last meeting. So they caught me off guard. Did you know, because even in your, in your financials, you didn't, you put down the 1.2.
That's, that's the number I knew. I wasn't thinking about the soft cost either.
Yeah, so that kinda caught us.
See, that's a really slippery term, that soft cost to begin with, because it's more or less a build-in change order.
Did he say those are maximums in there?
Those are the, according to the percentages that he's given.
That are required by CDVG based on the cost of the project.
Yeah.
And then they are maximums? Do you remember, did he say they were maximums?
Yes, yes. I am.
I did.
I moved that we go with the proposal from BG to do the survey work for a cost of $4,000.
I'll second it.
And I did call Clint about that reimbursable expenses. It made me nervous on section four, 4.1.4. And I said, now, according to this project, you don't believe there's any reimbursable expenses, right? And he goes, no, unless you, let me see what he said.
There was a section it referenced to.
So it's, you know. He said, unless there's additional work, it's forth, here he says, uh, you are correct. The lump, my question was, on page four of 12, reimbursable expenses, there won't be any of those, question mark, just a 4,000 lump sum payment, question mark, just confirming. And Clint said, Carla, thank you for your inquiry. You are correct. The lump sum will be for, a total cost, the reimbursables would apply if there was a request for our survey crew to return to the site for additional surveying. So, in other words, for this project, there's not unless we ask for more. Okay? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pado?
Next one up, um, for financials, general fund had higher expenditures than normal in August due to library doors and police radios being paid for. Police radios, just as a reminder, will be reimbursed at 100% as they were purchased under a grant. The water and sewer funds both increased in balance around $20,000 for the month of August. The sewer fund is 150 over the ending balance, ending balance of August 2018, but we have yet to pay the lining of our sewers, which the bill recently came, so you'll see that next month. The sales tax fund is up in expenditures due to the payment to Hall Brothers coming out of the system for the, for the repair. Any questions?
All right. We'll move it to standing committees. Street, Water Sewer?
Hold up, Street. Have they found anything out on the oiler yet?
Yeah, it seems to be up and running. We are.
I know there was something wrong with the computer.
They gave, they got us a new computer.
Is that what it took?
New computer. It's a computer that didn't need retrofitting to our oiler, so the company sent us a computer. I don't think we received a bill, so we're hoping for that. So, seems to be up and running. All the equipment, as of right now, seems to be ready to go.
You just waiting for dry weather?
Yes.
You're just hoping this week?
Betting on next week.
Are all three seals routes ready to go?
They are half a block away from completing seal, route number three.
So you, well, you get some warm days, you can run.
Yes. We, we hope for two shoots next. We can, now that I'm talking about it, I hope it doesn't just throw it out the window. So, yeah, we, we are ready and raring to go to chip and seal.
Okay.
Another project, another one.
Okay.
On the corner of Sixth and Kester, we have a major, I don't know what happened. I don't know if we had a sewer line, storm sewer line collapse. I have no idea what it is. But when we got that last little rain the other night, we got that inch something in, that whole corner backed up like a half a block north of there. And the gentleman that lives there, so that's the first time that's happened in years. So I don't know if we've got a storm sewer collapse through there somewhere. It runs from his intersection across the street to the west, and then it supposedly goes west. But he said a long time ago, he says, when the trailer court was there, it used to go straight south and into the drainage ditch along the track. But.
Okay.
He don't know if that line's even there. He doesn't have any idea, but.
I'll, I'll check it out.
But like he said, it flooded tremendously down there this last rain.
Okay. I will definitely have them go check that out.
Okay.
Where are you at?
Street. Do you have Street?
Okay, go ahead.
Water wastewater? Okay, I just, I actually was requested to bring a letter from Joanne Lacy about her property. She said, and I forgot the letter, but she has spoken to Austin, she's spoken to Darlene, she's spoken with me, she's spoken with you, Terry, she's spoken with Kent Bargman, and she really feels that her sewer line was affected by the water line put in on Ann Street, or 10th Street, 10th Street. And I did meet with Kent and Austin, and they had pictures to show that this sewer line, what her sewer line was, and it's made out of orange.
Orangeberg.
Orangeberg.
Yeah, that's not good.
So, um, so I just, I, I feel bad I didn't bring her letter, but she feels like we damaged it. Kent is pretty confident that we did not. I talked to Charlie Fredericks today, and he said that they are gonna help put a water line in with Habitat.
Sewer line.
Sewer line.
I'm sorry, sewer line with Habitat. So I just wanna make sure that, since she asked me to read her letter, I thought I should at least bring it up and say, I believe her, it's being addressed. The other thing is that Kent did note when we met with him, is that there were two sewer lines that they did damage on that water line project, but they did repair.
Yeah.
Which gives you confidence that if they broke it, they repaired it. So.
Well, I think it was also reported that two plumbers had, before the line work was done, had said that she had had problems with her sewer line. done, had said that she had had problems with her sewer line.
So, uh, hopeful that Charlie will help her and improve her situation. And I do think if she thinks, she believes we affected the dirt, we can put some dirt on her yard, right? Okay, so we can do that part. The city can come in and, they said they had a big dirt pile and then they took it away and they left and water was going into her house, so-
We'll make sure that there's-
We can fix the dirt.
There's no little spots where the water line was.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else water wastewater?
Yes. When are they gonna start the sewer line on the highway project?
They have until, what was that date?
Uh, I don't recall.
Seems like they're holding the project up right now.
They re, had to reorder-
Was it September?
The first fittings they ordered were four weeks out, so they essentially found it up in the supplier.
Gee. Right.
Are you talking about the sewer?
The forcement. Forcement, right?
No. On the 10th Street project.
Yeah.
Are we redoing sewer line in that?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
What does it hold up on that project?
There, uh, they had to get the flowable fill approved and they have to wait 28 days for that to be approved. So they're working on the other phases right now.
Now we're another month into this.
No, it, so they, they switched to another phase. Uh, so that sewer line was one of the phases, uh, so they're not working on that phase, they're working on another one. So they're not just sitting there waiting on anything.
Made them stop that project. I don't think they're gonna get it done this year. I'm sorry to say that.
You don't think they're gonna get the 60 days done?
I do not think they'll even come close. A month out of 12, 28 days in flowable fill, see if it passes.
Right, but that's, the flowable fill is only for that sewer line.
I understand that. Here's a project, you can't lay a street if you're gonna have to dig it up and put a sewer line in.
The other two, the other two phases around it aren't, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a completely different phase for that sewer line.
Good.
Yeah.
Sewer line, sewer line in the middle.
He does.
The sewer line's in the middle, yeah.
Okay.
All right. We're gonna hope and pray. Okay.
Well, while you're on that, when are they gonna start the one on Third Street while you're there?
Now we're to the forcement.
Now there's Tony.
Fittings, four weeks out. They found another source where they could get them sooner, so he's talked to us about staking and I expect any, any time now that he starts.
When it's coming, people.
I know.
All right. Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport?
Are they gonna do anything about the trees that are dying? Are they gonna do those this year?
Yeah, as this, in my highlights, I said a few, maybe a month ago, uh, I said they are going to replace them.
I know, but when?
This, end of October, November.
I don't remember you saying when.
The, um, the contractor that, or the supplier of his trees said they wouldn't pull the trees, uh, until a certain date, so he's waiting on that date. He said November. I asked him to move it up, we tried to get it moved up, so I'm hoping the pressure pulls them back to sometime in October, if not earlier than that. But, yeah, so that's, that's, they are replacing them.
Okay. And we had, some of the people were complaining about how big the mosquitoes were in the park?
Mm-hmm.
When we had the bike thing?
Okay.
So, were, should not the spray taken care of some of this problem?
The, it's not always a guarantee. They said, what do you remember what they said?
85%.
85%.
The first time. And it should decrease, but what, when's the last time they sprayed? I thought they sprayed just like a week ago.
They should have sprayed a couple, three times already.
They have, they spray every 21 days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also think we should spray the pony park and down the trail to the park maybe next year, cause it was intensely bad. There was the number one complaint-
From the pony statues?
Was that-
On the concrete?
Mosquitoes were insanely bad through there.
Really?
Yeah.
They were supposed to go fast.
I had eight bites on bikes, bites, and I wasn't there that long, so.
I never noticed them that bad there, but I know they were at the swimming pool, which I know they didn't spray the swimming pool, but they sprayed on the north side of the swimming pool, but the people that camped in the park were saying how big the mosquitoes were and I thought, you know, this is why we, that's, that's, well, I know, but they didn't spray there, we didn't pay to have them spray there.
No, we, we had them spray where the tent area is.
Yeah, wherever their trees are, they sprayed.
They sprayed.
They sprayed in the tinnerie.
Yes.
They did spray there.
But they didn't spray the, at the swimming, they didn't spray in the swimming pool, but they did spray on the north side and they were-
The trees, they sprayed, they sprayed the trees, yeah.
Yes.
We went all the way around the pool.
They did, whole park.
Yeah.
So I would have thought that maybe that we should have had a little control of the mosquitoes.
I wonder what would have happened if we didn't have it sprayed.
I know, I think-
Well, I know, but-
Now with football season coming, it'll be-
Well, I was at the game and there was, anybody else at the game Friday night? There were mosquitoes there, weren't there?
Yeah. We said clear up towards the top and still had them.
I know.
Well, anyway, I'm a little disappointed in our mosquito control if, if, uh-
Walk across to over the dike.
Well, I understand that.
Where the trail is and look at the giant water hole that's on the other side of it.
Well, I understand that.
There is nothing but a giant green hole.
So the key thing is, Todd, is they could tell the difference between where we did spray and where we didn't.
Well, I don't know.
What you're saying.
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe?
Well, I don't know.
They were massive.
I was just trying to figure out if that's what you were trying to differentiate.
I wasn't, I wasn't in the park, so I don't know.
I was down on the trail.
Yes.
Okay.
Cemeteries, um, there, there is a faucet or spigot up there, Austin.
Mm-hmm.
It's just south of the, uh, it looks like the, the pipe, the water line has burst and it's, it's bad, I mean-
Where'd you, where'd you say it was?
Okay, the chapel.
Chapel?
Chapel, south of the chapel, a bit. And they've got a white flag there. And it's been there a while because if you walk past it, it smells like a swamp.
Mm-hmm.
So, and speaking of mosquitoes. Yeah.
Back to Parks and Recreation, that reminds me, we were up at soccer on Feldhausen Field and there's a big water leak, Brian was saying that he's been complaining about it for a while now, but like you walk through it, you sink.
He hasn't said anything. On the Black Diamond?
No, at Feldhausen Field.
At Feldhausen Field.
For soccer practice.
Where, where at on the field?
It's right on the other side of the field, right by the visiting team dugout.
Just so when I go to soccer, I know where to stay away from.
Yeah, stay away from there. We walked, we walked up to go to soccer practice and we stepped in it.
Sounds like Brian knows where it is.
Everybody's feet got silky wet.
Brian knows where it is?
Yes.
Okay. See Brian. Okay. Soccer going on now?
Soon as the football starts.
Yep. All right. Cemetery and Airport. Todd, did you read this thing about this drone port that Ellen sent?
Yeah.
Is that a viable option for the?
I, I don't know, because I didn't die, I meant to do a little more digging into the legality side or-
Okay, let us know if that's something. I figured that's your bailiwick, not mine. Okay, police and fire. Did we, did we say the public hearing is gonna be 10:17 for the fire station?
Is that what it is?
They're gonna come to the 10:14 council meeting and there's one more committee meeting on 10:09.
Sounds, yeah.
Although it looked like the time was different. I got that email from Clint, it looked like it was from seven to eight. I didn't, usually made it seven to eight, but anyway.
Well, and didn't he say before council meeting on the eighth?
Yeah, he changed it. He changed.
Oh, okay.
That was another email.
He changed?
Oh, it was Emily. Yeah, Emily gave him a date and then, uh, and then he used that date, then it got corrected.
Cause I sent an email back.
You sent an email, yeah.
So what date is it?
I think you said the-
The 10:09?
The 14th.
Oh, the one, when they're gonna be at the council meeting.
The council meeting. That was that day.
She had told me she was coming to the first council meeting.
Yeah.
And then 10:17 will be the public hearing and she has to file it by the 1st.
The 14th, 14th is the public hearing. She says she's using the council meeting as the public hearing.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
That's both?
She just told me she was coming to the first council meeting, that's all I knew. But I'll look on my paper.
Yeah, look at, look at it again.
So that's a public hearing and council meeting?
Right.
On the 10:14. All right. All right. Anything else on police and fire? Admin and finance? The only thing I have to do about that is it talked about, I read this article from Leavenworth County about land banks. You know, we talked briefly about this, you know, we have that economic incentive to, to incentivize people to tear down, and this is where they're just doing the other route where instead of having, giving an incentive, they give the property over to the city. The city becomes a property owner, but then we can control the rebuilding of that lot. You guys want to look any further into that? Land banks?
What is it?
So then we bought, then we paid to take it down?
Yeah.
If they give us the property, then we pay the cost to take it down.
So we, we deem it's unsafe, then they choose to donate the properties to the city instead of tearing it down.
Oh.
Then we have to incur the teardown, but we also get to control-
Yeah.
-the selling of the property to develop it. That's the advantage, you control the development of that property.
Which we've had pretty good luck with and demand for, so it seems like something worth pursuing, I think.
Okay. So we'll just have FNA look at that more, find out more about it. All right, anything else? I don't know, but any appointments? City attorney, is he still here? Are you still here, Craig?
Here, and I have nothing.
Okay, then we'll move to, uh, there's not executive session on here, but I don't know of a reason. So roundtable discussion parade Friday, we meet at 1:45.
Did you get?
I will tomorrow. I talked to-
You're gonna get it?
Bomb, yeah. I'll pick it up. And so, uh, we have our, we have our concept. Dale, is he gonna help us with the cage?
Hi, I haven't talked to him again, I will.
Will you follow up with him on the other hand? And, and she's gonna make the cage, we have a squirrel, I'll make the signs, and we're all gonna be strong people. All right? Because I got the weights from the pool, so we're gonna be strong people. Got it? Our signs are gonna say Marysville Strong, and then I Escape from the Circus and This is My Home or something. Okay?
1:45 down, this is in the town somewhere.
Yeah, I, they, I turned it in today and then Mitchell will, is that his first name?
Yeah.
Mitchell Shepard? Yeah, Mitchell Shepard will send where we are in the parade.
Okay.
Okay? All right. And the last thing is, I just gave you that in situ form, they said they're gonna be here tomorrow in this area, yeah. And then you're not gonna have water here at City Hall from noon to 5:00.